I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Staff, would you go ahead and call the roll?
Commissioner Ferguson.
Here.
Commissioner O’Neal.
President.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
And Chairman Wiley.
Here. Thank you. All right. If anyone in the galley plans to speak or think you might want to speak tonight, would you please go ahead and stand? All right. Do you, would you just say “I do” upon this? Do you promise to do the best of your ability to give us the truth tonight to this planning commission? If so, say “I do.”
I do.
All right, thank you. You can be seated. Just for progress in our meeting tonight, just address when it’s your time to speak, make sure you say your name and your address before speaking. Only speak when you are at the mic and address all questions to me, the Chair, and we will make sure to get you an answer. So, let’s go through the consent agenda. I am open to a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I would like to move that we accept the consent agenda and approve the planning minutes from the last meeting.
All right. I have a first or I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a first and second. Any discussion on the minutes?
Quick question, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to make a note that Eric Ashmore was present for part of the meeting so that the votes make sense?
Yes, we do.
That counts.
Please make that change. Good catch. So with that one addition to the minutes, any other discussion? All right, I will call for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner O’Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chairman Wiley.
Yes. And the motion passes five to zero. All right, let’s go ahead and get started with our first case tonight. It’s case number 25-102. Staff, love your report.
Okay. On this presentation, I actually combined case number one with case number two. Same location, same property, same issue, just one’s the special use permit and one’s the rezoning. So, I’ll do the presentation and then we’ll have two votes at the end of the presentation for each of the cases.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
Okay. So this is, these are cases 25-201 and 25-102 for the Nolan Market Convenience Store. The applicant is Mohammed Asaf. The actions are rezoning from I-1 Industrial to C-2 General Commercial and approve a special use permit for a convenience store. So, as you look at the map here, you can see it’s roughly basically right across from the old Cargo Largo location, just south of 39th Street there by the public library. So zoning area history for these, this location, of course, north, you got the Cargo Largo, Zone C-2. To the south, you’ve got an I-1 zoned printing, commercial print shop. To the east, you have an I-1 zone wholesale construction supplies location. And then to the west, Zone C-2, you have vacant property. So, you can see those zonings here on this map to the right. So, this is the notification map for both cases, for properties that are within, were within 185 feet. The subject site is in the Harvest Village subdivision, which was recorded in 1967. The area was annexed back in 1958. And upon the creation of the ordinance, zoning ordinance, 1965, it was designated M-1 or M-2, which is our heavy manufacturing designation. In 1980, this site was subject to being changed to M-1 Industrial. Finally, upon adoption of the UDO in 2009, of course, that M-1 classification became I-1 Industrial. And the property was previously used as a herbal and tea shop and prior to that, a virtual office space for business services. The applicant intends to operate a convenience store at this location. Rezoning from C-2 or rezoning to C-2 will prevent a convenience store’s use, subject to the approval of the special use permit application as well. The subject site lies at the corner of East 35th Street and East 35th Street Court, which is perpendicular to it. The staff requested closure of the East 35th South Drive entrance, leaving only one entrance there on the west side, leading to the side street that is 35th Street Court. The parcel has a total of 12,448 square feet. The existing building is 2,444 square feet and is intended to remain onsite to be used for the convenience store. Asphalt covers most of the site, so it’s heavily impermeable, but, and it’s deteriorated over time. The subject site is located west of the Union Pacific Railroad and near Nolan Road and 35th Street intersection, which is a prominent corridor in Independence. Variety of zoning district classifications and land use categories surround this subject, but as you can see, it was mostly industrial and C-2 with the residential being to the south. A variety beyond the abutting properties, catty-cornered to the northwest is, as I mentioned earlier, the Mid-Continent Library, South Branch of Independence. A multifamily development lies to the south around the cul-de-sac and to the southwest. It contains a myriad of duplexes, fourplexes. General retail is located to the west of the subject site and includes a Hispanic grocery store and a vintage thrift store. As far as the location’s consistency with the strategic plan, meets the goals of increasing the economic prosperity of the community. The comprehensive plan tools and policies for the current designation. Imagine Independence 2040 encourages small-scale retail establishments integrated in the neighborhoods. The proposed rezoning could have a potential to service the surrounding community and provide walkability to the establishment. The area is not located in any subarea plan area. Zoning, industrial zoning classification is primarily intended to accommodate low and moderate impact service industrial uses, while the C-2 is intended to accommodate community and regional retail and service establishments. There are no apparent archaeological or historic issues with this site and all public utilities are available in the area, this developed area. Flood plane, stream buffer, there aren’t any required stream setbacks or flood planes in this vicinity. CIP investments, the city does not have any capital projects that are currently scheduled for this area. Parking and sidewalks, 10 parking spaces are provided in the proposed site plan, conforming with the parking ratio requirements of retail establishments as prescribed in Section 14501-05. The parking lot layout has been designed in accordance with the city code and provides ample dimensions for vehicular traffic. And the sidewalk extension will replace where the existing driveway entrance off of East 35th Street is planned to be removed. Streets and access, the driveway entrance off 35th Street, of course, is being removed, leaving only that one off of East 35th Court to the west. Landscaping, the applicant has provided a landscape plan in accordance with Section 14503. The plan includes a diverse mix of deciduous and evergreen shrubs and trees along the street, around the parking lot and the building perimeter. The remainder of the unpaid, unpaved open space will consist of drought-tolerant fescue. A total of 10 canopy and ornamental trees will be added to the site. Additionally, 24 shrubs will surround the building and the parking lot. And lastly, a masonry trash enclosure will be added to the site, conforming to the current development standards for dumpster screening. So this is the new site plan that eliminates the north entrance and shows the layout of the parking lot and the handicap spaces and the periphery areas where, in the next photo, we see where the vegetative plantings can be placed around the parking lot perimeter and near the building. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning. Staff also recommends approval of the special use permit request, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the applicant will make all modifications to the site as shown on the plan submitted to the city. The applicant shall comply with all use regulations prescribed in Section 14426. The applicant shall submit building permit applications for all redevelopment of the site as required by city code. And the applicant will obtain and maintain a business license and comply with all requirements as prescribed by Chapter 5 of the city code. And that concludes the presentation, and I’m ready to take any questions you may have.
All right, Commissioners, any questions for our senior planner? All right, not hearing any. I would invite our applicant to step forward. Right, please state your name and your address.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Jacob Hotson with Olson. I’m acting as an agent for the applicant, and I work at 1301 Burlington Street in North Kansas City. I don’t have a formal presentation, but we welcome any questions that the Chair, the Commission may have.
I usually start by just asking, what is it you think we need to know about this project?
We’ve been working closely with city staff to make this work. It’s taken a few rounds to make sure everybody was on the same page, and so we feel comfortable with the plan we put forward and we agree to all their conditions. So outside of what the senior planner has, you know, provided you, I don’t think there’s anything that’s much more additional. It’s an existing building. The owner wants to revitalize it and turn it into a retail space, and that’s basically where we sit.
All right, well, you already answered my second question, so, thank you. Any questions for representative? All right, hearing none. You can have a seat. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this case? Anyone who’d like to speak in favor? Okay, not seeing any. But is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Excuse me. Anyone who’d like to speak in opposition? All right, not seeing any. I will close the hearing. All right, any additional questions for staff? Brian, for the record, I’d just like to... Is the trees and the shrubs, that seems like an awful lot. So they are well above what is required and really, to me, it looks like they’re really going to beautify a very dilapidated corner. So, I just wanted to publicly thank the owner for having that vision and bringing a walkable convenience store potentially to that site, so, thank you. All right. Yes, Commissioner?
I don’t quite understand about this 35th Street entrance being demolished. I’m not seeing where the new entrance is going to be. Is it going to be the driveway that goes back to the apartments?
See, currently, there are two, if we could probably go back to an aerial photo. Yeah, I don’t, I don’t have a picture of the old. But if you look at this drawing here, there, currently, there’s an entrance that goes north to 35th.
Right.
And that’s been eliminated on this drawing.
Okay.
There’s another entrance that’s also to the west, that’s to the side street, is that cul-de-sac that goes to the south.
Okay.
And that is the one that would be remain, will remain.
Thank you.
Now, when I originally saw this, I wanted to drive by the area because the entrance off of 35th, I thought, wow, right after railroad tracks, that could be a little difficult. So, I think that was the right call to close that entrance. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, I’m gonna ask for a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner?
I move to approve case 25-200-01, special use permit for 13893 East 35th Street Court, South.
Do we need to vote on the rezoning first? Since it’s required for the special?
Either one, but, yeah, yeah, do the rezoning first.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
Okay.
So this is for the rezoning for?
No, it’s a special use permit.
So would you like to update your motion?
No.
It doesn’t matter, we can do the special use permit first. Virginia, second.
I have a first and a second. All right, I’ll call for the vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner O’Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley.
Yes. And the motion passes five to zero for case number 200-01? Special use permit. All right, I will call for a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner?
I would like to make a motion to approve case 25-100-02, rezoning 13893 East 35th Street Court, South.
All right, I have a first and I have a second from Pepe. All right. Any questions? All right, seeing none, I will call for the vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner O’Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chairman Wiley.
Yes, and that motion passes five to zero, case number 25-102. So, congratulations and thank your applicant for us. All right, I will look for the report for our next case, which is case number 25-810-01.
This is case 25-810-01, Kebel Dahmer Crash Champions. The applicant, Robert Merritt. Action being approval of a revised preliminary development plan. So you may remember this case from about six months ago. So this is the, you can see the star there is the location of a former auto parts store, just a little north of the Keela dealership. And you can see the notification area. Property is within 185 feet of this property in question. So the zoning is overwhelmingly C-2 in the area. And of course, we had considered that six months ago and got the PUD part added to the C-2 zoning there. So, north is again vacant land, it’s Zone C-2. To the south is the car dealership, Zone C-2 as well. East, we have office uses and retail uses, and to the west, we have vacant land and then that little, if you could call it a lake pond, off farther to the west. And here’s that aerial photograph, and you can see that wet area there off to the west as well. And here’s the revised preliminary development plan. So it’s down to one entrance there at the southwest. So, with the customer parking up front and then an area of, of, or a customer parking up front and wrapped around there on the north a little bit. And then a area for storage of vehicles awaiting repair there at the rear of the property. The addition being actually the longer building there on the south side and the smaller building in the middle being the existing structure. And then this shows the landscaping plan for the green spaces, the islands, the area around the building. Here. So the proposal, the intent of this is, this revised preliminary development plan application is to alter the previous site layout and built configuration of the rezoning PUD and preliminary development plan that was approved on August 19, 2024. It allows Kebel Dahmer to relocate the existing Crash Champions facility to the site of the former AutoZone parts located there at 1550 South Nolan Road. The site was rezoned C-2 PUD general commercial plan due development to prevent general heavy automotive repair. This zoning was authorized rather than a C-3 service commercial, which is the standard zoning used for this kind of use. The use allowed in the C-3 district zoning, which includes several industrial and wholesale uses, are not ones that would be compatible with the other C-2 uses along the Nolan Road corridor. So the PUD was brought forward to pair with the existing C-2 zoning to allow C-2 uses, but permit only the narrow additional heavy automotive use along with that. The services proposed are currently being performed, like I said, at another location in the city, but that location will be shut down and the operation will be relocated to this location where a former auto parts store currently sits. All the proposed services will be conducted within the building. The temporary storage and wrecked vehicles waiting will prepare, repair will be confined to the rear and the northwest side of the property and screened by the building and fencing as required by the city. There are trees and a large pond railroad tracks behind the property that further provide screening over 500 feet distance from the other uses in the area. The proposed operation is not a high-traffic generator, and Nolan Road has turn lanes that allow safe and efficient flow of traffic. The existing access can serve the proposed use. Two handicap spaces, one van accessible, will be marked and signed near the southeast corner of the existing structure and the proposed automotive storage area will be constructed near the rear of the expanded building. The building is a mixture of black and gray masonry and decorative metal siding. Although architectural variations were added with the light treatment, treatments and the windows there on the south side, some tall evergreens spaced between the windows are needed, in the opinion of staff. All utilities that are needed for this development are already in place and serve, can serve the operation. The drawing indicates stormsoars running along the north and south sides of the property leading to the west, leading west to the rear of the property, where the proposed detention basin will be created to the southwest of an opaque-screened auto storage area. Most of the new landscaping on the northeast and west will be in the green spaces created by the parking islands. Further additional plantings will adjoin the opaque screen to the northwest and east sides of the rear parking storage area. A masonry trash enclosure will be constructed at the northwest corner of the rear parking lot. The applicant’s plans indicate a six-foot fence located to the northwest and south of the rear parking storage lot. The fence should surround the entire parking storage area and should include a gate. The site sets on what is now six lots, a vacated alley and a half vacated right-of-way. It is in the process of being replanted, therefore, the property needs to have that recorded as well. Recommendation, staff recommends approval of the preliminary development plan revision with the following corrections and clarifications. General motor vehicle repair shall be allowed in this C-2 PUD district. The proposed structure is to set on what currently is multiple lots and vacated right-of-way. Therefore, the nearly completed minor subdivision shall be recorded before the submission of the final development plan. All drainage calculations must be completed and approved before submission of the final development plan. With this plan, stormwater runoff appears to have four routes in which the water may leave the site. One by a new fallout to the north without dry detention, one to the south with dry detention, and two in the new parking unless proposed grading routes them to the dry detention. The outfall to the north is a new outfall in the flow path and flow path and appears to result in a new ditch and possible erosion off-site. This apparent impact will need to be addressed with final engineering. An erosion control plan for the project will also be required. Six-foot-high opaque wood privacy fence to be provided should surround the entire rear parking storage area, included with a gate. All, and all this depicted on the final development plan. The interior of the fence or wall must be protected by a guardrail similar, or similar barrier to prevent damage to the fence wall, which, this is a standard code requirement. And number two, number five, the landscaping along the south elevation should be filled with evergreens to better soften that facade. And number six, this preliminary development plan has not been reviewed for final engineering design compliance. All development engineering must be designed in accordance with the City of Independence standards and specifications prior to approval of the final development plan. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions for staff? All right, hearing none, I invite the applicant forward. All right, state your name and address.
My name is Robert Merritt, 1600 Southeast Dalton, Lee Summit, Missouri.
My name is Robert Merritt, 1600 Southeast Dalton, Lee Summit, Missouri.
All right, what do we need to know about your project?
I don't think anything really, the configuration of the project has changed due to, due to some, some grading issues on the backside of the property, but overall, the, the look and feel of it is the same. But, but it's the same thing, basically, you all saw nine months ago, just kind of turned 90 degrees, so.
Okay, and that was a long list of recommendations for approval. You're aware of all of them, and you will comply?
Yeah, the only one I didn't know was the guardrail. That wasn't on the thing we sent before, but we'll clarify that.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, any questions from commissioners for our applicant? All right, not seeing any, thank you. All right, is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this case? Anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Okay, anyone who'd like to speak in opposition of this case? Anyone in opposition? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing. All right, any final discussion? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna ask for a motion. I will entertain a motion on this case. Anyone?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case 25-810-01, preliminary development plan, 1550 South Nolan Road.
All right.
Take it.
And I have a second. All right, any final discussion? All right, seeing none, I will call for the vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chairman Wiley?
Yes, and the motion passes five to zero for case number 2581001. Thank you very much to Cable Dahmer, and good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Anything for, anything for the end? All right.
No, just kind of a reminder, we will have a little bit of a heavier meeting next time. It'll be, I think, eight cases, maybe one on the consent agenda, so just be prepared for that.
Do we know, problem, why, what's, what?
Right now, July is pretty light. I mean, we don't have them that far out. I think the first meeting in July, we don't have any cases right now.
Pepe's gonna be in Mexico.
Okay, okay.
For the whole month, so we will be without him.
Okay.
We wish you a safe travel.
Yeah, so far, I don't, we don't really have anything that far out. So I think, like I said, the next meeting we will, the one after that, we have, I think, four cases. So that'll be the second one in June, and then July, we have not, nothing that far out yet.
All right, so bring your snacks to make sure we stave off low blood sugar. And I will see you at our next meeting. This meeting is adjourned at 6:34.